Good morning. Welcome to the October 21st meeting of the Punta Gorda City Council. Please let the record reflect that all council members and city officials are present. Please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Father in heaven, we ask that you bless our meeting today and uplift our thoughts so that we may communicate with each other with a deep understanding of the needs of those we serve. We give grateful thanks for the friendships this association offers us and the inspiration we receive from each other. Let respect for others and their ideas be our standard. May thy grace be with this council and their appointed staff and guide them in fulfillment of their duties and decisions. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
This morning, we have two proclamations, and I will read the first. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas city government is the government closest to its citizens and one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents, and whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to an understanding of its many responsibilities, and whereas city government officials and their employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits, and whereas Florida City Government Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives, and whereas Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all the citizens of Florida that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of October 18th through the 24th, 2015, to be known as Florida City Government Week in the City of Punta Gorda and encourages all citizens, city government officials, and employees to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this 21st day of October, 2015, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, Carolyn M. Freeland, Mayor, and accepting is Howard Koenig.
So on behalf of council and all of the city employees and then all of the neighborhood and community organizations and the residents of Punta Gorda and the businesses, everyone participates. You're going to see at the end of the meeting a presentation about how everyone participates, and we accept this, and let's keep going on.
That sounds good. Thank you. And our second proclamation will be read by Councilmember Tom Kavanaugh.
My pleasure. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas founded in 1957, the Soldiers' Chorus, the vocal component of the United States Army Field Band of Washington, DC, travels throughout the nation and abroad, from Boston to Bombay, Tokyo to Toronto, thrilling audiences of all ages for more than half a century, and whereas these musical ambassadors of the army perform both independently and jointly in all 50 states, Canada, Mexico, India, and throughout Europe, keeping the will of the American people behind the members of the armed forces and supporting diplomatic efforts around the world. And whereas the United States Army Field Band Soldiers' Chorus from Washington, DC, is performing in concert at the Charlotte Performing Arts Center, November 1st, 2015, at 3:00 PM. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim November 1st, 2015, as US Army Field Band Day throughout the City of Punta Gorda and urges all citizens to attend the performance by this outstanding organization. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this 21st day of October, 2015, City of Punta Gorda, Carolyn Freeland, Mayor, and accepting is Charles Brooks.
Frank Mazer.
Oh, Frank Mazer.
Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you for the proclamation. On behalf of the Military Officers Association, our local chapter, we're very proud to work with the band to come here to Punta Gorda. Last spring, we worked with the Navy Band and Choir, and they put on a memorable performance at the event center. We had over 2,000 people in attendance. This event, we hope, will be as memorable. We've heard good reports about it, and we're very happy they came. This spring, we're working now with the Marine Corps Band, and hopefully, they'll be here for the event center as well, and you'll be notified in the paper. Admissions to these concerts are free, so, you know, we're welcome. Everybody is welcome, and thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
If there is anyone that has been nominated or wishes to be nominated for a committee, now is the time that you can introduce yourself. If you would like to do so, please come forward.
Morning. My name is Vic Poitras, and I'm here asking for your support to serve an additional term on the code enforcement board. Rather than taking up much of your valuable time, I put together some material that I hope will help you make that decision.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Your resume, Frank. Resume? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to introduce themselves? All right, we will move on now.
Okay, I have something to say.
You tried to move too fast.
You're too fast, Carolyn. Good morning, everyone. I have a very special presentation to make this morning. Today is our mayor's last city council meeting. Well, maybe. Maybe he'll be back. So I have the honor of presenting Carolyn with a plaque from the city. And Carolyn, I want to thank you for your service to our city, for your time and your talent, and I'm going to miss having you here, so please come up and... And the plaque says, "In honor of Carolyn M. Freeland, distinguished member of the Punta Gorda City Council, 2011 through 2015, Punta Gorda Vice Mayor, 2013 to 2014, and Mayor of Punta Gorda, 2014 through 2015, presented by the City Council, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, this fourth day of November, 2015."
Thank you. This is truly lovely, and I was going to say something perhaps at the end of the meeting, and you're pushing me now. I have been truly blessed to serve on our council. I said to Kim, "Don't let me get emotional." I have worked with an amazing group of people, not only in this council, but our staff, the many members in our community. I want to thank my husband for standing with me. I want to thank those who urged me to run and their support of me, my friends, my family, but particularly this council for allowing me to serve as mayor this last year. Thank you. I had other things to say, but I just want to say to all of you, thank you so much. I know our city will continue to do very, very well, and I'll say some more later. But thank you.
Does anyone else want to get up and say anything?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Carolyn, I want to thank you for your support for the Peace River Wildlife Center, recognizing our importance in this community. On behalf of the board, the volunteers, and the staff, we want to thank you, and we hope we have your continued support as a citizen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Carolyn, you and I have known each other for a long time, many years. We had the opportunity several times before our city council time to work on projects together, and they always had a great outcome. I'm really glad you stayed a second term. I think that was a good move. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your retirement, and we'll see how long this retirement lasts. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill knows that I keep trying to retire, and I keep failing at it, so I'm going to try again.
Nancy Johnson, Team Punta Gorda. We'll try to help you not retire. We have lots of projects you can do. I want to say that I have admired your term as mayor because you are so professional. You're always the best-prepared person in the room. You do your research. You always have an ear to listen to citizens, and I so appreciate the level of professionalism that you have conducted yourself with through your term, and we will miss you, and we appreciate all you've done.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Ray Rhodes, representing the Punta Gorda Island Civic Association. Thanks, Kim, for allowing me to talk before full audiences, instead of this five of you. Carolyn, I've known you for a long time, and folks, she's been a true asset to this community, and I don't care where you wanted to look in her career, her contributions to the community as a whole, and I think I've known you now about 15 years. The guy in the back there, the bald one, that's Tom. And thank you for everything you have done for this community. The good news is, is you're sitting on a council, and whoever replaces you is going to do a great job, too. Thanks to all of you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Patty Allen, Fisherman's Village. When I first met Carolyn, it was several years ago, and the first time was at a chamber when you conducted our annual board meeting. And one thing first came to mind when I met this lady, it was elegance, and that has never changed in my mind. It was an honor then to work with you, and it has been an honor right up until today and hopefully continuing our relationship. But one of the things this year has been with Fisherman's Village, it's not an easy decision to make such a great decision for our city, and I will tell you, your foresight for our expansion has been remarkable, and I thank you for your foresight for our community and for our future of our community. But again, it's always, I come back to the elegance, and I look forward to a continued relationship with you, and I wish you the best of luck. Where is Tom? Back there. Thank you for giving of your time in allowing Carolyn to do what she does best, and we are going to miss you a great deal, and happy travels. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not tall enough. Carolyn, great job. On behalf of the Animal Welfare League, I'd like to thank you for your support and council for your support over the years of your service to this community. Great job.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, David.
Steve Abian. I've probably known Carolyn the longest than anybody in this room, even Tom. Because she played with my nephews in Island, New Jersey, so that's how long I've known her.
Wow.
And she was a feisty little girl then. She's a feisty little girl now. Thank you, Carolyn. Great job.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you all. This is, it is bittersweet, but I'm very proud of our council's accomplishments. We have taken on our predecessor's ball, or balls, I should say, and we've run with them. We have technical problems, maybe. But I think importantly, we have always focused not only on just doing things right, which we always do, but also doing the right things for Punta Gorda. And I know that this council will continue to do that. I was thinking last night that if I looked in my crystal ball, I would say that we have a very good chance of getting that cooperative funding from SwifMud. So that's my crystal ball. My husband, Tom, and I are excited about the next chapter in our lives, in which we are looking forward to travel, spending more time with family, and starting to check off some of those items on our bucket list. But it has truly been an honor, and all of you, thank you. And I look forward to seeing you around. I'm sorry I won't be playing with you on city business, but I do look forward to seeing all of us around town and all the number of activities. I mean, obviously, we all know it is happening on the harbor, so...
We'll be able to talk more.
Well, you will? Now that we can talk to each other, this would be wonderful. Thank you. Thank you all. Really, thank you all. It has really been an honor and a pleasure.
I think probably, Rachel, do you have something to say?
Sure. I would just like to thank you for your service. I mean, you know, when you first came on, you thought, "Oh, I'll do two," and then we're like, "Oh, no, 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 you have to stay." So thank you for making that decision, like Bill alluded to, because you really helped us establish a real consistent, friendly, friendly working-together board here, and that was a nice change for the city from what had been in the past. And so I really appreciate that and working with you these four years. It's been very smooth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn, it's been an honor and a privilege for me to have served with you on city council. As we've all learned in the Florida League of Cities School for council members, the objective is to leave it better than you found it, and you, Mayor, have certainly done that. Thank you for your service. And I have the privilege here of passing on to you your new name tag, which identifies you as former mayor.
Whoa. How cool. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Again, it is all of us who have made the accomplishments, not just me.
Nancy?
Yes, you know, I entertained the thought of coming on to council. I didn't know what to expect, but it's been a great experience, this closing my first term on council. And Carolyn, you've been a real role model and done a great job as our mayor, and I want to thank you and wish you all the best, and you and Tom, because I know that you have a lot of things ahead of you, and certainly, council takes up a lot more time than anyone outside of council would imagine, so thank you again and good luck.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you so much.
On behalf of myself and all the staff?
It's been a pleasure.
It has been a pleasure. It really is.
It's been a pleasure.
And we have such an amazing staff, obviously led by this man here, but we have an amazing staff.
And somebody's going to have to, whoever takes over is going to have to keep up the work with McHale now.
Yes, I guess I have pushed a bit, haven't I?
Well, you know... The former mayor did her part, too.
I'm sure. I'm sure. Well, thank you all.
David?
You know, as a city attorney, under my contract, each meeting is a challenge to make sure that I am retained for the next one. And one of the things that I greatly appreciate is that you really all do get together well, work well, and each time we have a transition to a new mayor, it gets a little bit better, a little bit better, and I do appreciate, and I think grace is a good way to describe the way you've conducted the meetings, and I think that just sets the tone for the matter in which the debate takes place. Never will there be a total agreement on all issues, but making it all civil is a tough job, and you've done a great job doing it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it so much. Thank you. Again, thank you all. Oh, we have pastry?
Yes.
Well, if everyone would like some pastry. We're not having a meeting today?
It's just a suggestion.
I think that sounds wonderful. If so, you're all invited for coffee and pastry. Enjoy.
Five minutes?
Sure. Five, 10 minutes? 10 minutes. 9:30, you will come back. Okay? Nice. I like that idea. Can we bring everyone back to council table, please? Where did everyone go?
Took their donuts and ran.
Well, that's one way to clear out the audience now.
Well, we'll call our meeting back to order. Again, thank you all for all your good wishes, your kind words. Very, very much appreciated, and the plaque is absolutely lovely. Thank you. We will now move into our public hearing agenda. We have no public hearings, but we do have two quasi-judicial public hearings.
Yes, the next two items are quasi-judicial public hearings, which means that any evidence and testimony that will be presented on those items needs to be done under oath. So anyone that is going to be providing evidence or testimony for items V-05-15 or V-06-15, please rise to be sworn by the city court at this time.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. When you come to the podium to testify, please state your full name and indicate you have been sworn.
The first item, V-05-15, is a request by Sean Howard, agent for Robert D. Dixon and Caryelle Foscato, property owners, for variance to the land development regulations pursuant to Chapter 26, Article 16, Section 16.10, Punta Gorda Code, to allow a 3.4-foot-wide by 5.5-foot-wide, excuse me, in length, set of concrete steps attached to the pool stem wall to encroach into a 7.5-foot-wide drainage easement in use located on the south side of Lot 1, which is prohibited per Chapter 26, Article 3, Section 3.13-U and Chapter 26, Article 8, Section 8.14, Punta Gorda Code. The address is 3869 Turtle Dove Boulevard, Punta Gorda, Florida.
Good morning. For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official, and I have been sworn. This request became as a result of new construction of the single-family residence. The site easement, as you can see, has a pipe running through it and therefore is considered in use. The city did adopt an ordinance which does prohibit anything permanent from being constructed in the easement in use, you know, should the city need to get into that easement in the future. In this particular instance, it was completely an error, and the steps are tied into the stem wall for the pool, so simply removing the steps could create an integrity problem for the pool itself. Staff would support the variance approval under some conditions, that if any work was needed to be performed in the active easement, any encroachments that would need to be removed would be done by the property owner, and the property owner would bear any expense of the removal and replacement of such encroachments. The Board of Zoning Appeals recommended unanimous approval with the staff conditions. And I would like to enter my staff report into the record by reference.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Question. How often would something like that need to be done, like the pipe serviced or, I mean, does it happen?
It's not, to my knowledge, it's not that often. The pipes, they actually rely now, I understand, as opposed to replace them, so it's not that often. It's possible they could do work even with the steps there. There are many easements in use which do have encroachments into them because the ordinance that we adopted, I believe, was 2012 or '13, which prohibits. So prior to that, you have all sorts of things that are permanent nature in easements and use.
Tom?
Is this something that was just missed during the permitting process, Terry?
It wasn't shown on the face of the permit as a proposed location for steps sometime...
Sorry, say again?
On the original site plan, the pool step location was not shown, and so the contractor, probably working with the property owner, decided that's where they wanted the door to be for the pool enclosure, and they just automatically just put the steps there. It is something that we do try to watch, make sure that they show all of their pads, pool equipment pads, step pads, but in this instance, it wasn't shown. We found it on the ASBelt when they submitted that at final inspection.
Are there questions? Yes, Kim?
I'm okay, as long as the owner understands that if that has to be, those have to be taken off, it could affect the integrity of the pool, and so probably if they have any recourse with their builder, now would be that time instead of, you know, possibly 20 years from now.
Anything else?
No, I think that it's lessons learned, so I'm sure this is one of those things where we put it on our list of make sure we ask about that in the future, but I think that staff's recommendation is reasonable.
Carolyn? Yes?
What Kim just spurred a question in my mind, so does this runs with the house? So what happens when they go to sell? How does the new potential owner find out that they're, you know, under this obligation to, you know, remove the steps if needed?
I'll answer that. The variance is, if it's not as a matter of course recorded in the public records, I would recommend that this one certainly should be recorded, and therefore it would show up on a title search.
Okay. That's a good idea.
This is a quasi-judicial public hearing. Did anyone else wish to speak? The property owner or the advocate?
Move approval. 0515.
Do we have to close the public hearing?
No.
Yes.
Okay. Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Move approval.
Second.
With the condition that the variance be recorded.
And that the, and the condition is recommended by staff.
And the condition is recommended by staff.
Okay. It is moved and seconded to approve V-0515 with the conditions. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next is V-06-15, which is a request by Michael Simone, manager of the Simone Revocable Trust Agreement, property owner, for variance to the land development regulations pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.10, Punta Gorda Code, to allow an existing covered and screened wood deck, which has a setback to the Minha waterline on the existing riprap seawall of 19.3 feet instead of 25 feet, as is required per Chapter 26, Section 8.19, Punta Gorda Code, and to allow a screened room with composite panel roof on a wooden deck to be constructed with a setback to the Minha waterline on the existing riprap seawall of 10.6 feet instead of 25 feet, as is required by Chapter 26, Section 8.19, Punta Gorda Code. Address is 25188 Marion Avenue, Unit 1002, Punta Gorda, Florida.
Good morning. For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official, and I have been sworn. This variance request is in the Emerald Point subdivision, which is the particular property in question, as shown on the aerial. And on this copy of a survey, the proposed new area is highlighted for you there. This Emerald Point in and of itself is a bit of an anomaly. There, as you can see on the aerial, there are many structures that are much closer than the required 25 feet from the bulkhead line or center of the seawall cap, and staff does not know how they got there. In this particular instance, the, what is existing is setback 19.3 feet. What they're proposing is to go much closer with the new structure. Staff does not support the new construction, granting a variance to allow what exists to remain. remain is common, and we do not have any objections to allowing what remains. The, if, if the, this was considered for approval, the building official has a condition that if the variance was approved, the requirement of a structural engineer's report showing the deck met the minimum code requirements when it was constructed, the material was water and decay resistant, and the steps and railing were safe and in compliance with code requirements. No hardship can be found for the request to construct a new deck with a screened room with a composite panel roof with a rear yard setback of 10.6 feet instead of 25, 25 feet as is required by code. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the new construction only. The Board of Zoning Appeals also recommended approval of the variance for the existing deck, only with the condition of the building official and denial of the request for the new construction.
Questions, comments?
So the old deck needs replaced?
No, I'm, I'm of the understanding the old deck exists, it's just nonconforming.
Oh, so we're just saying, okay, can stay, you don't have to tear it out, but it's, it's not under decay or anything right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is or it is not?
We do not have an engineer's report on what exists, but the building official's concern is if we add new construction, he wants to make sure what exists is properly engineered.
And do I understand correctly that Emerald Point was annexed into the city?
It was annexed in. I can't find the exact date of the annexation. It was, from what I understand, kind of partially constructed when it was annexed. It was, from what I understand, the mid to late 70s and the records on Emerald Point are sketchy at best.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm trying to understand the diagram here. Is the, on, to the right where it says covered and screened deck and it's 21.65, Terry? It's to the right of the area that's covered? Yeah, you're pointing right at it. Is that a neighboring deck?
No, that is the deck for this, this property.
That is also a deck for this property?
No?
That's not correct. That's, that's my neighbor to the right. That's an existing covered deck.
Gotcha. Highlighted deck is yours.
Can you go back to the photograph that you showed earlier and kind of go in a little bit? So are those white areas, these, the, the white areas that we see on the right or left? Are those the roofs over existing covered decks?
Correct.
Sir, would you give your name, please?
I'm sorry. Michael Simone.
You have been sworn.
I have been sworn. Trustee manager.
I apologize, sir. You do see the 1001 over here and 1002 here, they just didn't give us the center line between the two.
And the center line, sir, would go from the edge of the deck, straight through?
Straight through.
So basically condominium 1002 only has the 5.75 area for decking, is that correct? Or do they have the entire thing at this point in time?
Just the 5.75. The extension proposed is another 8.25 feet out.
Yes, Tom?
Are there, are there other situations, are there other condos that are as close out to the water line as what this, this unit is requesting?
There are some out there that have, that are built right up to the riprap.
That's why I asked you to show that photograph that you had before, because it, I think it reflects what you're just asking.
Could you go back to that photograph? So apparently some are, are, as you said, right out to the riprap and, and others are several feet back. And I looked earlier today at a, at a view of the entire complex and some, as you said, they, they go right up to the, it seems there's so, so much inconsistency over there. What criteria are we using to, to deny this application or, or approve the application?
From staff's perspective, I have to look at what the city code of ordinance says today and what is permitted today. Things that may have been constructed in the 70s, there may have been different regulations in place. It's possible this was an early attempt at doing a planned development and, but the ordinance for any such planned development, I have never been able to find. So it's unknown how other structures got, got that close to the water line. We can only base things on that are proposed new construction.
So all the others then are considered nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we would be, in effect, penalizing some of the newer developments if they want to conform to what has previously existed.
It's a mess over there.
Well, is anything 25 feet? I mean, is there anything that's 25 feet there? I mean, really, the rule doesn't, like, what you're alluding to really doesn't even apply because is anybody within it or outside of it or, I mean, it should apply, but...
David?
Well, I, I think the answer to that question, Terry can answer. I was going to follow up with Councilmember Kevin Osso.
As far as if anything out there is 25 feet, short of a survey of the properties, I would have no way of knowing if, I mean, some appear in an aerial to be much further away from a water area.
Okay.
But...
I'm okay, as long as there's going to be an engineer say that the existing that's there, that he's going to build on, is in good shape and is to code. I mean...
David?
The, the existing decks shown on the aerial are legally nonconforming structures. If those, and, and as a legally nonconforming structure, they can be maintained, they can be repaired to a certain extent, but if they are damaged or if they need to be replaced over time, the replacement would have to meet the current code. So ultimately, if, if you were to deny the variance, ultimately all those others will eventually be replaced and meet the code as the one that you would provide for today. So, so I'm, I'm not sure it's necessarily penalizing the applicant for complying with the code because ultimately all the others will be required to comply with the code as well. And I have a question, Terry, with respect to the building official's comments. They're, they're seeking a variance for the existing structure as well as a variance for extending, if, if the, the requirement regarding the engineer's certification regarding the condition of the existing deck, is that to apply for both variances or only for the variance for the new construction?
And, and...
And I would suggest that in, in either event, there should be a certification that the existing structure that now is being granted a variance is structurally sound and, and all that. What happens if the engineer's certification indicates that it isn't constructed according to the code that existed at the time or that, that it's structurally sound? We need to put in a provision that if that's what the engineer finds, then it needs to be removed. And if it needs to be removed, then it automatically would need to be replaced in accordance with the current code.
Yes.
Why does he, why do, why do they need a variance if it's legally nonconforming? Why does he need a variance for what's there right now?
That's a good question. I was just reading from the staff report. What the fuck?
Typically in Emerald Point, people do not ask for variances for what already exists. It's when they want to add on to it. It just kind of got pulled into it because that part is also a, a nonconformity. So when you request to extend something that's a nonconformity, it's just pointed out that that, that part is also already nonconforming.
I, you know, with all the properties in Emerald Point, many of which even overextend appears beyond those that are on the right side. I mean, we have some at the top there that are, must be on the riprap. I mean, it's, they're very extensive. And I just cannot imagine that as any of these need to be bolstered or repaired or whatever, that they're going to come back and we're going to say, oh, well, now you can't have your deck. I mean, all of these people moved in there with a deck. And, I mean, to me, this is, I don't know.
Because, because you're right, if they don't meet the 25 feet, then they either have to cover variance.
I don't think some of the condos meet the 25 feet. Thinking of this.
And, and in answer to your question, actually, the variance, even with respect to the existing deck, provides some legal benefit to the owner because that way, if that deck, the existing deck, is somehow destroyed and needs to be replaced, it would need to meet, meet the 25 foot setback, which maybe they can't do. So granting a variance even with respect to the existing deck does provide a, a benefit to the, to the applicant.
Yes, Nancy?
Well, it's, as I listened to the conversation, and I've had conversation with Howard before in regard to other areas of our community, not necessarily within the city limits, but it almost begs the discussion of, should there be separate zoning requirements or code just for Emerald Point? Because what we're, it seems like we're trying to do is, is overlay, the special residential overlay requirements on an area that wasn't built to that and never will be to that. And, you know, in order to make it livable for the residents, the people that invested in these properties, it's, it's very inconsistent. So how do we do something that is coming up with some kind of consistent standards, but just for Emerald Point that we can, that we can live with?
I wish ahead of the net direction as well. Is, is there a property owners or homeowners association at Emerald Point? Is there any?
As far as I know, there is, yes.
I mean, I'm not trying to ask that we do anything that's unsafe or that would be stretching the, the note, the thought.
No, and I think you have a good point. I think the, the issue that we are concerned about, and I guess that is that what is the criteria that we're really concerned about? We want them to be safe. You know, we don't want to slap their hands because they're out, you know, coming out to the 25 or less than the 25 foot area.
And we don't want their porches to crumble.
Yeah, we, we're kind of encouraging them not to maintain, you know, because if they have to...
Take them down, they'll be...
They'll be penalized.
The building official did come down and I'm sure can answer the questions more specifically about what he would recommend.
Randy Cole, I haven't been sworn. Do I need to be sworn? Yes. Okay.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Randall Cole, building official. My condition was in conjunction with the existing deck. Any new construction will meet the code through the permitting process, but the existing one, anytime you're going to grant legal status to existing structure, I'm asking that, we have an engineer's report that it's a safe structure and not a danger to life safety. And so what happens if the engineer's report says that it's not? They're required to be repaired to be safe before the appearance would take the full effect and make it a legal structure. Otherwise, if, if you, if you bring in a, a, make a structure legal, whether it be a shed or a deck, that's not safe, there's nothing that triggers to keep it safe and it just, the unsafe condition continues to exist.
Well, perhaps, again, maybe following Nancy's suggestion, maybe we should look at kind of an overlay specifically for Emerald Point to identify what is it that we are concerned about and have the properties come in for variances if they want to do something with their current deck, whatever, to ensure that it is safe, something to that effect. I'm not sure.
I'm not asking that the deck be brought up to present code, only that it be in conformance with the codes that were in effect at the time it was constructed.
I see what you're saying. Yes.
Is it an actual extension of what is there, the proposed? It's an actual extension of... Is it the same elevation?
The proposed deck condition is right here.
So are those steps? Okay, wood steps and landing, but it's at the same elevation of the deck that's already there, on plane with it?
Yes. Yes. Can we hear from the, from the owner?
You're, you're the manager, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you speak to the issue?
Oh, absolutely. Again, we're just trying to, as new owners, we're trying to enjoy our spaces, our neighbors enjoy their space. You know, it just happens to be that, you know, this particular unit that we bought is probably one of maybe two within all the townhouses that do not have a screened-in lanai and fully intended when we purchased it to be able to do that, you know, as part of our, you know, upkeep and remodeling.
So the, this 5.75 feet here, is that screened or is that covered or...
It's open, that's not covered.
It's just, it's just a patio?
It's just a patio.
Thank you.
And, and also, just to speak a little bit up to speed, the, this was originally approved by the association at 17 feet. Then with some opposition from my neighbors, it was rescinded and brought back to the Building and Architecture Committee at the association. It was reviewed and then the Building and Architect Association had made a recommendation at 14 feet. They felt that 14 feet was going to be fair with everybody. The 17 feet actually brought us out even with our neighbor to the right. So they rescinded the initial approval. We went back, the Building and Architecture Committee went back to the board, recommended a 14 foot extension. They thought that that was a fair compromise. That was voted on and approved by the association and that's currently, you know, where the association is.
Did I also read, though, in the comments that there were some, your neighbors on either side that were not in favor of your extension?
Yeah, both my neighbors on either side are not in favor of the extension. Evidently, it's, you know, it's, it's going to affect their view. I don't know if you can, well, this really doesn't show, but all of our, with a riprap is, all of our units face down a canal. So all of our views are facing straight out the back of our, you know, we're, we're actually fortunate, we're one of the only buildings that has that kind of a view. So the view to the left is a mid-rise, the view to the right are more townhouses, as you can see right here. So we look down the canal. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an effect on anybody's view looking forward, the same view that we have. The sun rises and sets in the same area. I mean, everything is the same. All we're asking is that we can enjoy our property as do our neighbors and everybody else in the, in the Emerald Point community.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
It's a public hearing, so I guess we'll see if anybody else...
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to VA-0615? Please come forward, state your name. Have you been sworn?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Cynthia M. Androtti and my husband and I, James Cunningham, own Townhouse 10001 and we are full-time residents. We've owned the property for five years and lived there full-time for two. We are not in opposition completely of the owners of 1002 enjoying a larger space. Their original proposal, out as far as making it 17 feet, actually, we were originally informed it would be 12 feet. And while we were on a trip in Europe, the board voted, voted a larger section and that's why when we returned, we opposed that and the board reviewed it and agreed because they were told at the first meeting that we were in agreement. And we were not in agreement, we had not seen the plans. And it wasn't until after the plans were proposed that we said we were in opposition. The reason that we're in opposition is due to the view. And while Mr. Simone is correct in one statement that our view is down the canal, it is not true, we do not have a barrier to our view. Our view is also to the side and the, the size of the deck is not necessarily an issue. It's the roof line and where it comes and obstructs our view to the right side where we have a view year-round of the townhouses eight through 16 and 17 down the whole side. So what it does is it blocks our view from the right half because of the full extension. So at 14 feet, it is better than 17 and 14 is what they submitted to you, but our opposition really was the fact that with the roof and the, and the roof line there, it does affect both us and our neighbors in 1003. Because again, it's not just a view straight down the canal, which is, like he said, one of the best in the community. But that, that's really part of our opposition is the view that's obstructed and, and that, you know, other neighbors are affected by, by that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward. Have you been sworn? Have you been sworn, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
John Gregory Boland. I am the chairman of the Building and Architecture Committee at Emerald Point, and I live in townhouse 1008. The reason that I came today was I did see the, the minutes of the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting for September 22nd. They were told that the board at Emerald Point voted against Mr. Simone's application. He was actually approved three times, once for an open deck at 17 feet, once for a lanai enclosed at 17 feet, and then the latest was for 14 feet. So we had, the first one for the open deck was strictly the manager who gave the approval for the deck at 17 feet, and then when it was rescinded and redone at 14 feet, they were both board of directors, open meetings. I have the minutes to those meetings if you want them, and nobody objected to the size or the view or the condition. We reviewed it as a group of five members, both for sightlines to each side as well as the ability for fire departments or police departments to be able to get between the riprap and the extension of the lanais. And I guess that's about all I can say, other than the fact that 1003, although that view doesn't show it particularly well, the stairs and the overhang for their stairs actually protrude further than what that picture shows. And to answer a previous question, we have reviewed the distances between lanais and the water on all the townhouses and the villas, which is probably the ones that you saw in a wider view, and nobody's set back 25 feet.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will of the council?
Moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved. Is there someone else that wishes to speak? Did you wish to, please, then, thank you.
I want to put him on the omen.
So, this is maybe a little bit of picture, what it looks like from the canal looking towards the units. 1001, us in the middle, 1003, and then continuing on. This is a view to the right.
Mr. Simone, I'm sorry, you're, can you, can you do your best to speak into the microphone while you're...
Oh, I'm sure.
Thank you.
So the, the view to the right just gives you an indication of, you know, the folks that do have screened-in lanais. This is the view that my neighbor to the left is talking about. Currently, this is our view. To the left is the 1001, and of course, there's the roof line that nobody wants to look at, but that's the one that we look at. And then to the right is the roof line and, you know, this disheveled wood here, which would all be replaced with a, with a new lanai. So, and if you can flip the page there, this is a forward view of both my neighbors' current lanais. So I just wanted you to have a full understanding of where we are, where they are, what we see, what they see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on VA 0615?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Move approval V 0615 with the conditions that the building official has requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve V 0615 with the conditions espoused by our engineer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
May I make a recommendation?
Yes.
I'd like Terry's thoughts on working with the Emerald Point homeowners association to come up with some kinds of standard for them that might be an acceptable... It, it's obvious, this isn't the first time that something's come to council, because everything there is non-standard to all the rest of our code. And I understand all of the issues that, you know, even the, the first, the owner of 0, 1001, but in my situation, personal situation, we had someone, you know, put in a lift with a, a boat that obstructed our view, but we had no, we had no recourse because, I mean, it was perfectly legitimate to do, so what are your thoughts on that?
I'd be more than happy to, you know, work with the board. Some of the issue with Emerald Point, it's a rather large development, and as you can tell by the aerial, there are some areas that appears that everybody's right on the riprap. Other areas, like this particular row, some appear closer than others. I mean, it's kind of a mishmash of, of what's out there, and I don't really, and maybe the city attorney can help me out, how you would write regulations for something that exists that we do not have any solid information on exactly what's there.
First Rachel, then Tom.
I like the, I like that the development itself has this committee, and it seems like they've hashed a lot of this out over these applications that the, our applicant made to, and maybe somehow, I don't know if that was really included in the material that we were given, to know that the architecture committee and there was a compromise made. Maybe we could use some of that, like we do with our boards and committees, into the record so that we understand that they've had those discussions over there and that this person has tried to work within, you know, the neighborhood and things like that. It's, and what, what you're trying to say, I think, is like trying to put a square peg in a round hole, and you just can't do it. So I don't know, you know, they sound like they really have a good committee structure over there dealing with these issues, but when it comes to us, it's kind of clunky.
Tom?
My comments with Mayor Rachel's, they have an architectural committee, as, as we witnessed. I, I think that any future requests for variances from that community should be reviewed and, and that statement attached to a variance before it comes to this, this city council or even the zoning...
Yeah, the zoning should...
But there might be some other opportunities to really look at the, the basic issues that as a city we're concerned about, and I think that the main one would be safety. So maybe there might be something we can do in terms of an overlay specifically for Emerald Point.
Well, I'm hearing differing opinions. If you want staff to start looking at something, we need direction.
Well, that would be my suggestion.
Well, it's just that every single person is going to have to come for a variance, it sounds like. Is that, am I on the right track?
Yeah, and, and there are a couple of ways to deal with it. We, we could recognize the existing situation and modify the 25-foot setback because none of the properties meet that, and come up with a uniform setback that's less than the 25, and still allow for variances if necessary for that purpose. There's also the possibility that we make a significant change as it relates to Emerald Point and, and delete the requirement for a setback for Emerald Point and just leave it up to the architectural review committee to determine what's appropriate in each individual case for their own community or something in between.
So I think what you are suggesting, it goes back to staff to work with Emerald Point?
Yeah, I, I think, I think the two parties, the city and Emerald Point, need to come up with what would be workable.
Yes.
Are you talking about to change the setback?
I, I think ultimately, either we change the setback or we eliminate the setback in our ordinance and leave it to Emerald Point to decide what the appropriate setback would be for, on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, I mean, I just have, I, I have a little bit of concern about directing staff to work with them. It is a big development, and there probably are a lot of things over there that, so...
I was only talking in terms of this, this particular issue that comes before us.
The decks.
Multiple times, yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, the decking, not anything else.
Right, correct.
Nancy, did you have to add?
Yeah, I was going to agree that it seemed like it was deck...